No comparison unanimously, thank you. Approval of minutes, November thirtieth. Tad, did you get my?
Yes, I did, and I forwarded it to the planning board secretary who's already made amendments of your choice. So the minutes have been?
They've been revised and sent back to?
And the one that we have is the revised version?
Unless Tad sent it again.
No, he sent it again.
Okay.
It's my fault.
It's not official till four.
I don't think I know what the parents of the amendment time suggested. I don't know what to do with that.
A motion that we approve, the minutes as written.
Can we approve them?
I can tell you what I changed.
Yeah, please, so that I can see whether or not it shows up in here.
Let's see. So for in section with the land use revisions, item number two, land use in subdivision regulations. The copy you have says it's suggested that the first paragraph's phrasing be changed to, Chip noted that it should be at any point that that phrasing appears that it needs to be changed, and he capitalized "schedule" and "fees."
Because we're asking for a defined schedule of fees.
Right, in an amount specified in the schedule of fees.
Right. The term "schedule of fees" was capitalized in the old language.
Oh, okay. So you think it should be capitalized here as well?
Yeah, I think it was good enough for the old version, I thought it should be.
And I did, I corrected that.
Okay. I just, yeah, we have the original.
Yeah. Pretty much any changes you made, Chip, I made.
Okay.
So, and then I think there was some capitalization also in that section.
There was one turning landing board into planning board.
Yep, right there, in section seven point one, point B, I added the capital P and made the L lowercase. But that was, I think, it.
Question on item three, animal husbandry?
Yes.
It says, setting species standards, should it be "species" or "specieses"? Anybody know?
Specieses.
That's what, well, that's what I thought, and I was afraid I might be wrong, so I figured I.
No, I think you're right. It should be species plural. Does it have a motion or amended minutes?
Make a motion.
I made a motion, so I will change, amend my motion to accept.
Nobody ever seconded your motion.
Okay, so it's one, make it.
No, go ahead.
So, okay, so make a motion, we accept with those three changes, mostly just correct the spelling and.
Yeah, it's already been corrected.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, any other discussion? There are none, all those in favor, say them out by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Okay, we have a new item on the agenda that I hope will work out. This is citizen comments where we want to have a venue for residents or property owners in Arundel to bring matters to attention to the planning board which are not on the agenda for this evening. If someone wants to bring a matter to our attention, please state your name and address and subject to the matter that's brought up, at least initial comment, limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody that wants to make a citizen comment? Yes, sir.
There was a question a while back about a meeting to go over a bunch of changes. Is that in the, in the near future?
I discussed that issue with Phil Labby on the court of selection at least two months ago, and he was supposed to get back to me about moving forward with a, start with a smaller group, at least had a agenda, he talked about it privately. And I will make a note to call Mr., I'm sorry, no, not Phil, what am I talking about?
Town manager.
The lawyer, no.
Oh.
Danalein, Tom Danalein. I talked to Tom at length about it, maybe two and a half, three months ago. I will call him, and that's exactly what this is for, is things like that. Anybody else? Okay. All right, moving along. We have five public hearings. Allow me to point out that these are all amendments to land use ordinance in order to make the deadline for the January, is it eighth? Special Town Meeting. These amendments need to be approved tonight by the, by the planning board, if I'm not mistaken. We do not have any latitude to make changes, so it's an all-in-one proposition with each item. So let me open the public hearing on the citizen's petition to amend the Arundel land use ordinance. And that has to do with pet daycare performance standards. Everybody, Paula, want to make a comment, or?
I would like to.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jessica Rubishats, I am a certified professional dog trainer and allergist, I've been training for about ten years now. I am a member of the Association of Professional Dog Trainers, which has recently moved to your chair of Arundel, you know, to. And I have to say that I was, when I did move here from Beniford, I was quite impressed with the ordinance. It does show that there's a lot of understanding about dogs, about dog behavior. I was thoroughly impressed that they, that you guys knew about the, first of all, about the Association of Professional Dog Trainers. It was, you know, excellent. And then I do really think that having it, having the ordinance remain the same would be excellent. One thing that I'd like to mention is, I know here it said that they would like to change in regards to having it be a certified animal trainer instead of a dog trainer, and I don't think that really specifies enough training with the particular animal that you're working with. I think, you know, I, like I said, I've worked with dogs for about ten years now and have a lot of experience with aggression, you know, extensive experience with behavior modification and working with a lot of positive reinforcement training. It takes a lot of experience, even myself still feels as though as I'm an intermediate trainer at this point. There's still stuff that I'm still learning every day, and it's been ten years I've been doing this professionally. So I do think that this, keeping it a certified professional dog trainer, and actually that word needs to be trained, changed, the certified professional dog trainer has, it here says certified pet dog trainer has been changed several years ago to certified professional dog trainer, just wanted to let you guys know that. And one big part of it is the continuing education. So sometimes they will have other certifications that you could just go on a computer and all of a sudden you take a course and now you're a dog trainer. Whereas the CPDT certification, it has, you have to have lots of hands-on experience. I think it's three hundred hours, again, it was a long time ago for me, hands-on experience, teaching classes, and then you have to get several approval, you know, from a client, from a veterinarian, and from a colleague, and then you have to sit for a four-hour test. And then the biggest part is the continuing education piece. You have to get thirty-six hours every six, every three years of continuing education credits. And that's one of the biggest pieces that some of these other certifications are lacking. They don't require that, so once you are completed, once you have completed your education, which sometimes they're excellent education, however, they leave out the piece of the continuing education. And I'll tell you right now that it's huge, you've got to continue that education, that is crucial. It's a changing industry, it's a changing, you know, and just because you've been doing something, you know, thirty years, doesn't necessarily mean you've been doing it like for thirty years, and you've got to keep up with, you know, everything that's going on in the industry. So I guess that's my main piece, I think that it should remain the way it is.
Comments or questions, questions from the board? Okay. Anybody else have any comments on the proposed change to the ordinance?
Can I comment on what she said to her?
Sure.
Now, you're talking about a person being a dog trainer.
Identification.
Yeah.
We need identification.
Oh, I, excuse me, I'm sorry, ma'am. Would you please just identify yourself for purposes of the videotape?
Chris Woodward, and I'll go.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm the one that's trying to open a dog daycare.
Yeah.
And if I was going to have to be a trainer, I would train dogs. I don't want to train dogs. All I want to do is be able to take care of a few dogs. I do have some experience, no, I'm not a dog trainer, okay, I don't have anywhere near what you have, but I'm not asking to train dogs.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just see a lot of daycares that are just not run properly. You really have to understand dog body language and the ins and outs, I mean, the nuances of dog body language, and be well versed in it. And I mean, it takes a lot of years to get real, real good at it. And like I said, I still consider myself after ten years intermediate, and I mean, we're talking nuances.
Time out.
Okay.
The comments need to be addressed to the chair.
Oh, sorry.
And do you need to be recognized before you start?
Oh, sorry.
Go back and forth. Can anybody on the board have questions for either of the members of the public that have commented on this? We do have a section below where we will discuss the recommendation of the board. Okay, hearing no other comments?
I just, I'm curious, this is.
Again, we're going to just consider our recommendation later.
Okay, all right, all right, I'll hold off on.
Okay. Sorry, so unless anybody objects, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the petitioner has submitted letters of support or letters to the board that need to be read into the record.
Oh, okay. Is that what this is?
I have a question about the letters. They don't appear to be in support of the petition, they're in support of the driveway, with the exception of the first one. Every one of the letters supports her not having to correct the driveway. There's nothing in any of them that discusses the petition and whether it should be adopted or rejected. So I personally think that the letters are a moot issue, they don't belong in this discussion.
Well, this, who is Janet?
Janet Mastinum, last month first in.
I like, kind of what I was gonna.
Is that fair?
Mention before, but it really is connected to what you said, Rich, is that this isn't really about a single applicant, this is about changing the ordinance. So this is.
Do you have it written down?
Whether or not someone intends to not train dogs, or have a good driveway or not, this is changing it so that any future applicant, not just the one that's before us, can, will be affected by this change.
I can read hers, I couldn't read hers.
Okay, I mean, we've got multiple letters from people saying that their vehicles don't have any issue navigating the driveway.
Those are just to add to my file, the main, the two main letters in there were from Janet Mastinum and my neighbors as far as the setback.
I'm sorry, I don't see anything making reference to setback.
The first letter.
The first letter simply says that he's happy with, he doesn't mind that you would have a daycare. It says nothing about the setback.
And I do think it's important to point out that, well, I'll hold that thought. Thank you, Tad. So how do we read the?
Well, if there's, it's up to you to make, I mean, anything that references the proposed changes should be read into the record. I'm of the opinion that nothing in here references the proposed changes.
Any objections to that? I think it's the same thing.
I think the same thing.
These are the nice letters about.
They say a lot for the applicant, which is.
Don't address the changes to land use ordinance.
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
I think that last meeting was like the twenty-eighth of September, I was not here, so I did not hear what the discussions were about. So I'm gonna more or less recuse myself because I wasn't.
Which discussion, sir?
About the driveways or whatever else that went there.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm saying is.
But that's, that's specific to an application, that's not.
Okay, okay, I'm just saying I wasn't primitive to that meeting, so I mean.
I understand, but again, that's specific to.
The application, huh?
The Woodward's application, not the change to land use ordinance.
Yeah, I did refer right there.
I just, I want.
Yes.
It doesn't say that the person needs to be a trainer, it does say they have to have someone who's on staff, so they can certainly hire someone who is a CPDT.
Okay. That actually has been discussed by members of the board.
Yeah.
Tad, can I close the public hearing?
You're the chairman, you certainly can.
Okay, all right, we, I'm officially closing the public hearing on the change to land use ordinance, section nine point three point three-three, pet daycare performance standards. We have another public hearing to add section, it's very short, section one point nine, amended uses, which is a nice clear statement of the Dillon Rule, simply saying that if a, in effect, what it says, if something isn't explicitly permitted, it is prohibited.
And it also references.
So I'm officially opening the public hearing on this change, the addition of section one point nine to land use ordinance. Does anyone in the public have any comments?
I'd like an explanation on that.
On amended uses?
Just because we haven't caught up to something, you think it's illegal?
No, it's been, this language in, it has been in the land use ordinance all along. It wasn't clearly in a section by itself, it was buried.
In definitions.
It was buried in the definitions. So we're, we actually aren't changing the rules, what we're doing is making it nice and clear, it's a separate section that says what the land use ordinance already says, but right currently, it's buried in the definitions, this just makes it explicit and more user-friendly.
You've read this, right, Roger?
And every time I read that ordinance, you change it, I'm even wrong, so.
But you've read this section, right?
I have read.
Okay, so.
But I don't like what it implies.
That any land use not specifically identified is permitted?
Not in there specifically is illegal, and that doesn't make any sense at all to me.
As the chairman says, that's a prior, but that's the standard of land use ordinances. And what we were trying to do with this was to make sure that it was stated upfront that it wasn't hidden, that it was clear right in the first chapter, so there was no question about that. And the other part of it was dealing with the retail marijuana issue and saying that retail marijuana uses, as defined in the retail marijuana law, not specifically identified as a permitted or conditionally used in this ordinance shall be prohibited. So it basically says that those marijuana, retail marijuana uses that the town wants to permit must be specifically spelled out and put into the ordinance, it's not. Right, and Roger, that's the thing, right now, we don't, we don't have any clue as to what, I can't use Marty's crystal ball, he won't let me, so I can't see in the future. But the ordinance is designed such that if somebody comes into town and they want to create a widget factory, well, right now widgets aren't allowed, but they could petition the board and we could put widgets into the ordinance, which would make it permissible. They wouldn't be able to just come in and start producing widgets.
Question.
You gonna let me use the crystal ball?
Yeah.
Ah, right.
Okay, question. Because it doesn't have a definition of a widget, or is it because it is a manufacturing?
No, because it doesn't have the definition of a widget, so we'd have to define what that process would be.
No.
Actually, it's a terrible example. Oh, okay, well, it's the only thing I could come up with right off the top.
Marijuana is a great example.
Well, I think marijuana is a great example.
Something we didn't, of course, we would have thought this would be on the table three, four years ago, now all of a sudden it is. So we don't want to get caught off guard, just because it's not in that ordinance, does that mean it's allowed? So we have, it's almost like just a check valve, and like Rich said, if it is something that's new, we're always open to considering it.
An example, Roger, relating to marijuana, there is a proposal, I may have some facts wrong, so treat this as a hypothetical, but hypothetically, if someone wanted to have a very large marijuana grow operation by stacking up containers and having, whatever it is, four plants, six plants, I can't remember, in each container, and having individual ownership of the containers in a storage facility.
Control atmosphere.
That would run afoul of the condominium provisions of the land use ordinance right now, but it's a lot cleaner if it is simply, if there's no provision for commercial cultivation of marijuana in the land use ordinance, and until there is, it's prohibited.
It's not just that, do you relate this? Somebody could come up with a new widget, whatever you want to call it, and if you don't have it listed because they're ahead of the curve, you're not going to allow it, regardless of what I guess.
That's why I think widget was such a bad example, because manufacturing is allowed, it doesn't, that's not allowed really, you're manufacturing widgets, digits, or fidgets. What it does say is that you can have manufacturing in this zone, but not in that zone. And again, this, the first sentence is actually in the current ordinance, it's just in the definitions. So we're not actually changing what's there, we're just making it better in terms of people seeing it.
And our uses are very broad, our uses are extremely broad, but what it does is to make sure that things are very clear when there's this long list of things you could do in the district, that it's very clear what you can do and very clear what you can't. And in the retail marijuana, if I'm in this attorney, retail marijuana is a good example of it, because as the town attorney has warned this town before, basically, you can, any, our existing uses, like agriculture, retail. Manufacturing is a huge one, marketing, taverns, all of those things under the definition, unless we would put there and say you specifically got to have, it has to be specified that you can do this in the district, think of slipping in under any of those definitions, because growing marijuana is agriculture, basically making the product, whether it be.
Cookies or.
Cookies, brownies, you know, joints, whatever, that's manufacturing, that's product production. Selling them in the store, that's retail, retail's allowed. And so specifically, it was, the idea was to specify that in, when it comes to this special thing called retail marijuana, it can't be misconstrued with our general, our general definitions, that the townspeople make the decision whether they want any of these five retail uses and where they go in the district, but you can't just sneak it in under some other guise. If the townspeople want it, they'll put it in as retail marijuana sales, you know, retail marijuana testing in various districts, terrific, but it's up to the townspeople to make that decision and not to be slipped under the radar, using a general definition, that's why it's.
Roger, just speaking personally, if this were something new, I would feel very differently about it. But it's actually, it is in the land use ordinance now, it's something that's referred to legal terms as the Dillon Rule, which is that basically, everything not explicitly permitted is prohibited, and it's a very common legislative thing to have. That's okay, you could come to the town meeting on the January eighth. Okay.
Maybe follow that night.
Any more, any, should we make, any more comments on the addition of section one point nine, public hearing? All right, hearing done, I'm gonna close that public hearing. Next proposed amendment is the application fee system in sections one point eight, point Well, there are a bunch of sections here. Find this, if I may.
They should be all.
Open the public hearing on, these amendments have to do with, these aren't the fees, are they?
No.
Yes, there's fees.
Yeah.
There's fees, yeah.
Yes, just the fees.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You're opening, you have to call time.
I apologize.
Correct.
It is.
And shutting the other one down, time.
Okay, well, we shut the other one down at.
Seven thirty-four.
Thirty-four, and we're gonna open this one at seven thirty-five. Thank you, ma'am, you apologize.
No.
No, no problem.
Unfortunately, we have. This is amendments to fees and LOU. And we discussed this in detail at the previous meeting. Does anyone from the public have any comments on these changes? These are fees for applications to the planning board. What else, Mr. Planning?
Basically, all the, the problem with the ordinances is that they have fees that are codified at a certain amount, and the selectmen usually reserve the right to establish fees on an annual basis or whenever they deem necessary. We have to change ordinances in order to change the fee structure. And so what this does is it basically reverts all the language of specific fees to a list to a list of schedule of fees that are determined by the selectman. So it's no longer in the ordinance. It's based on the list of schedule of fees that the selectmen produce on an annual basis or a semi-annual basis, or however you want to do it. So it allows the selectmen, who are the keepers of the fee schedule in the town, to make those changes on an as need basis, based on fiscal needs or costs, control.
And not.
And not have to go to a town meeting to do it.
And I want to emphasize, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting about ensuring that this language made it so that there is a schedule of fees that applies to all applicants uniformly, rather than being something that could be determined on an ad hoc basis by the board of selectmen. Okay, any more comments on this amendment, these amendments, the land use ordinance relating to fees? All right, hearing done. I'm going to close the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. Was it eight? I can't see that clock very well.
Nah, close enough.
Seven thirty-seven, correct. Okay. So that takes care of that one. Now, at seven thirty-seven, I'm going to open the discussion to repeal and replace section 5.9 on landscaping and buffering. Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this? Okay. Hearing, no discussion. I am going to call that public hearing to a close at seven thirty-eight. And finally, we have proposed amendments to land use ordinance to add sections 9.2.9 and 10.6.4, requiring applicants to demonstrate technical and financial capacity to complete a project under conditional use or slight site plan review. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this? Any board members have comments that form of the public hearing rather than the discussion? Let the clock tick around to. I'm, there was one plan.
I'm just counting the seconds.
All right, is that seven thirty-nine? Close enough. All right, I call the public hearing closed. Okay, now we get into section five. And the planning board's recommendation to the board of selectmen. My understanding procedurally is that this board will vote, make a recommendation to the board of selectmen. However, the vote at town meeting doesn't have to follow the recommendation of this board. Is that correct, Mr. Planner?
That's right. You've fulfilled your statutory duty of that.
So we would be, when we vote on these items, we will be doing our duty to make a recommendation to the board of selectmen. But that does not mean that the outcome of the town meeting could be different. So with those comments, we'll be open discussion of citizen petition to amend the land use ordinance relating to pet daycare center performance standards. Tom, you had something you wanted to talk about?
Well, this, looking at this not as it affects the one applicant that's been before us, it's more of any, anyone who wants to open up a pet daycare center for B.R. So. I think it's, it could be great neighbor or anything. It really has nothing to do with what these proposed changes are.
I do have a question, since you're here. How much work does it take to be able to get certified? Is it three hours or?
Yeah, it was about three hundred hours of like experience. It doesn't have to just be teaching, it can be, you know, hands-on experience. You know, usually you're, as an instructor, supervised by someone else. But you could also do volunteering, like, you know, at a welfare society, things like that, they take that as well.
So those hours if you were at that, you know, mesquite or.
Yeah, they usually count those hours as experience to sit for the test. Yeah.
Okay, I have a question. Is, is there a certification that is dog-specific, but less rigorous than what you have?
Yes, and that was actually something that I did think about that I would be, you know, would be willing to recommend. There are a couple of other ones. But I, but I think one of the biggest pieces is certainly to become a member of the Association of Professional Dog Trainers. Off the top of my head, I can't think of one that's less, well, there actually is one. There's the, there's one test that you can do, and again, it's one that's online. It's very good, however, it leaves out the piece of the continuing education. And I do think that's the biggest piece.
Regardless, one of the calls and.
Yeah, I have to look at it. I'm not sure exactly the name of that one. I have to, I can look at it in a minute.
Okay.
Another question to follow up. I'm not sure what the difference between a dog trainer and a dog caregiver would be. Do you know what the difference would be?
Well, I'm just.
I'm, my.
No, 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 go ahead.
Well, like I said before, I'm not looking to train dogs, okay? I'm not, I am not a dog trainer, you know? I have had quite a bit of experience with other people's dogs, my own dogs. But no, I am not a dog trainer. But that's not what I'm asking to be, you know? And I'm not trying to have a big operation. I'm asking to, you know, take care of a few dogs.
Is there, is there any other certification for dog caregivers or whatever?
Yes, there is, there is. And they're just online, online courses.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If I remember correctly, prior to changes, we've had other places in town that did not have the word dog trainer in, in place. Okay? Is there possibly two different standards? Are we calling for daycare, okay, in comparison to kennel, boarding, training, and everything else?
I think, well.
Instead of putting it together.
Maybe the most important point to me is that we cannot make any changes to what was the petition assigned. All we can do is recommend its adoption or recommend against its adoption.
I understand.
And I, I do understand where you're headed, I think.
Yeah.
And we can certainly bring that up at another time. But what we need to do right now is talk about the petition that's in front of us.
Correct. But I'm just asking a question, and overall, by, by other board members or how has it been in the past before everything got rechanged over again?
Are you wondering how long it's been requiring?
Trainer, trainer, it was, that was just recently. When we were doing changes, the word trainer came into effect instead of the other facilities were operating. Did not require that. Am I correct? If I'm wrong, say so.
You're looking at me. To the chair?
Yeah.
Want me to respond?
Yes, please.
Yeah, if you recall, what we did with pet daycare centers, the object was, was to, those were designed to be in the business districts, as you recall. That was, they were supposed to be convenience thing, large daycare centers for dogs that are dropped off by commuters and picked up on the way home kind of thing. And that's why we limited them to the business districts, because they involved a lot more dogs. When we did those, when we came up with standards for that, because of the closer proximity in that district, in those districts, we looked at a lot of the existing ordinances that people have pet daycare centers, or those cities that do have them. And a lot of them refer to the, the standards that were set by the Association of Professional Dog Trainers. That's right, right? I see, yeah. And that's, those were the standards that we were using. We used both other city, other towns standards for this particular use. This is a unique use. And it wasn't limited just to dogs. Remember, this is a pet daycare. This is also dealing with other species. You guys were very insistent not, that we wouldn't have exotic species like bulk instructors and so forth. But this also included cats, it also included pot-bellied pigs, and included a whole bunch of different animals.
How did, why do you need a certified professional dog trainer if you're boarding pot-bellied pigs?
Well, it wasn't. It was dealing with the, when we were looking at this, we were dealing with the dynamics of dogs in a group setting. Because dog care centers, usually they're not caged up in little cages, they're usually free roaming. And so the issue that most of the cities, most of the communities had was the issue of dealing with the dynamics of dog interaction and being able to control dogs when they're, when they're in a group setting like that. That was the issue. We discussed that, if you recall, and we had a lot of discussions about how you deal with this. And so that's why we went to the standards that were set by the American Dog Training Association. Because they have some of the better standards on how to deal with dogs.
Pick your brain for something.
Sure.
Originally, we allowed dog daycares in the business districts.
Right.
And we were asked to amend the ordinance to allow it into, is it R1 or R2?
Or the residential districts.
We were, we were asked to amend it and allow it into the residential districts.
Which you guys were concerned about.
If we change this ordinance now, it's going to affect what we have set up for the business districts, because these are the new regulations that will apply. The other, I have another issue, other than, other than the fact that we were asked to, to change, to allow dog, pet daycares into the residential district, and we said, yes, we will allow that. We're now being asked to change the standards that were established for the business district. And if we change it, it's going to apply across the board. It's going to affect not only the residential, but it will affect the business districts. It will affect everything. The other issue that I have is that if you look on the very last page, the section Q, we advocate home rule. We are saying that whatever the state decides to allow is what we're going to have. And it won't matter what we say in this ordinance. The addition says, "Town rules and regulations shall closely follow those of the main department of agriculture, conservation, and forestry, animal welfare program and certification rules for dog daycares and main and owner operators must show proof of satisfactory state inspection." We're being told that if we recommend this change, that it doesn't matter what else the ordinance says. What does the state say?
We have to get to the state.
We give up our control to the state. I, for one, am not willing to do that.
Okay. I've got a number of comments. The proposed amendment includes the term certified animal trainer. There is no such thing. There are certified dog trainers, and certified horse trainers, and probably certified boat constrictor trainers. But there is no such thing as a certified dog trainer.
Animal trainer.
Certified animal trainer, I apologize, yes. There, the amendment to the eight-foot requirement for fencing and including coyote rollers, this board has still not been given any kind of documentation about what coyote rollers are. I did do some research on the internet. The commercial, just so you all know, the commercial coyote rollers are four-foot-long aluminum tubes on something with a bearing, and they have little, like, ribs or paddles on them, specifically so that the animal jumping up spins the.
Won't gather traction.
Well, yeah, won't get any, well, it spins very, very easily. I actually watched a couple YouTube videos. But they are, that's not, this is, this amendment, I don't know whether it would include what was described to us as a piece of cable with four-inch PVC pipe around it, or whether it requires the commercial devices called coyote rollers, that's not clear. I will point out that the commercial vendors of coyote rollers, the two, the first two that I found, specifically have a minimum six-foot requirement to be effective against coyotes. Not big dogs, against coyotes, to keep coyotes out of your yard. Coyotes are medium-sized dogs, they're small dogs. So I, personally, I, I have not seen any compelling reason for the six-foot reduction from eight foot to six foot. So the, and then just overall, the petition, I do understand that you want to start a business. What, but this petition is tailored to your situation. So what you are, what you have brought, there are changes to the land use ordinance which are specific to your business, not dog daycare in general.
Couldn't that be for any dog daycare?
I'm sorry?
Couldn't that be for any dog daycare? You're not just, just mine? I mean, couldn't anybody do the same thing?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? You're proposing a change to change from certified dog trainer to a certified animal trainer. And I can't help but wonder if, if you want to have dogs, why wouldn't you be a dog trainer? Why, or let me put it another way, that, that this would still be a barrier to almost anybody else that wasn't an animal trainer. You, you said you were a horse trainer? But that's, that's great, but what if someone else wants to open up and they're not a horse trainer? It would work, this works for you, but if someone didn't have that.
That's accurate. That's a perfect example of what I was saying about this.
I'm just curious, if not a dog trainer, why, why make someone be an animal trainer? If they want to take care of dogs?
Well, either way, you're, you're saying that you have to be a trainer. Okay, animal trainer, dog trainer, whatever. It's not like, you know, you're saying, oh, you don't have, you don't have to do anything. But going back to what Chip was talking about a few minutes ago, about the other daycares in the commercial zone, they do not have a dog trainer. Okay, so because I'm in the rural zone, I have to be one. I don't understand that. Why are there two dog daycares in this town that do not have to have a dog trainer? Like, yes, I do.
They were in existence at the time the ordinance was written. This was designed to control it from that point forward, so that if you wanted to have a dog daycare in a commercial, in the commercial districts, you would have to have a certified dog trainer. The two that you're thinking of were there before the ordinance was written.
It's called grandfathering. It, it's, it's called grandfathering. Okay. I, I, I think Tom's point, the, the certification is a perfect example of why I perceive this as being tailored to your business. I, I don't see any difference between someone who is, has oodles of experience training horses and someone who has had dogs all their life. It just, it doesn't, it, that doesn't fit to me. I, I don't see any point in having, of, of... In requiring a certificate for some kind of training, but not specific to dogs. Any other members of the public want to comment on the...
It's closed.
I'm sorry, public comment is closed. I apologize.
Make a motion.
Do you have a question, or...
I have a response to your question that you'd asked me prior to about a lestricent certification.
I, I'm, I'm not sure that's, that's relevant, but thank you.
For the record, for the record, can we have it?
We have no choice. We have to either take it or leave it.
I know, Jim, but just for the record, for her response, can we add the name of it?
Yes, please.
Yeah, it will be at your college. They do, and it's, it'll, it's an ABC certified dog trainer. It's still, it's still a certified...
A, a what?
Yeah, Animal Behavior College.
Thank you. And Marty, thank you. You're correct to get that, put in the record. Is there any further discussion on this, this change in the ordinance? Okay. May I have a motion on some sort?
I make a motion that we recommend the Board of Selectmen reject the petition. I'm not quite sure if that's the correct word for it.
Because the Board of Select, this is a citizen petition. It has to go to, before the public. It has to go through to town meeting. So, you would not recommend adoption.
Okay.
So, we do not recommend, or you don't...
You're making a recommendation to the town meeting, not to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes. Oh, you know, for some reason, I thought we were sending, we, we were sending a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. If it's for town meeting, I recommend that it is not adopted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
And I, I just do want to add that some of this I, I agree with. And, and unfortunately, it comes across as, as a door block to you personally. But I think with some, some tweaking or some changes, I, I could, I could be in favor. But as written, I think it's too broad of a brush. It's too sweeping for me.
I'm not going to agree with what Rich said about the State of Maine. We don't want to be run by the State of Maine.
No, I, 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 I don't know. I agree with you on that one.
You have the camera themselves.
You've got enough control. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to recommend against adoption of this proposed change to the land use ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, if you can hear this one. Okay.
Next item. It still will go to town meeting.
It goes to town meeting, and town meeting is what makes the decision. They, that, that is the legislative body that, that will make the decision. Item two, proposed amendment to add section 1.9 on omitted uses. Gentlemen, any further discussion about that?
We had lots of discussion when we decided to put it in.
Okay.
In the motion, we, we...
We do it.
We do it. We do it. This, this amendment.
At the town.
At the town meeting, yeah. The town meeting affair.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Further discussion?
Yes. Because it's, may not specifically say we have to do something along the way on definitions, because, but our crystal ball doesn't shine definitions of present and future and past.
Which, which is one of the things that makes this such a good idea to put it in the land use because it's no, it's no longer in the definitions, and you, you don't have to guess about.
Correct, but I'm using this as a reference to several years ago, before Motorland came in. Okay? Somebody wanted to set up a different type of business who was already in town. And basically, they were told, no, they couldn't do it because there wasn't definition. And this was an existing business already in town. I know I'm right on this one.
There have been so many examples where someone approached us, and it wasn't quite in the ordinance, but with some warrant, we were able to have it approved at town meeting, and they were allowed to move it to town or to...
This was already in town. This business was already in town.
What was the business, Marty?
Galway Trucking.
What?
Galway Trucking.
Yep. I believe that, I believe that, that, that decision was made by the code enforcement officer, as I recall.
I don't remember it coming before the planning.
Oh, yeah. I, I remember. Because we talked about definitions, and I was so adamant about it, and I got blown off and says, "We don't need to do it now."
Well, I, I don't know about that, but I, that, to go sit down, that was the decision about the code enforcement officer.
Because there wasn't definition.
Well, no, he was actually, couldn't find anything that was comparable to it.
Correct, but it was, we needed a definition, and the definition was never put out. This is where I'm saying is a restriction by definition.
What, it's not, every use...
Because it didn't say a trucking company or whatever else that is not allowed in town.
Okay, and the point is, you're saying all uses that we have, and this is one of the things that we've been working on, all uses that we have should be defined, have some sort of definition, unless they're very obvious.
Like church.
Like church. But we have a definition for church, house of worship. You know, like retail, like wholesale, like personal use, a personal, I don't think we have a definition for TV station.
Why not?
Because it's pretty self-evident. You really have it in places where there might be some question. I mean, you can put in a definition for every single use. What it does say in the definitions is that, you know...
Let, let, let me, let me turn this around. Have we had, what, what examples have we had where someone wanted to start a business that was unable to fit in the land use ordinance and was not objectionable on other grounds?
I can think of two. And we, we changed the land use ordinance for both of them. We changed it for Kate's butter, and we changed it for seasonal cottages. We created special zones for them.
And special definitions.
And special definitions, right. Okay.
Because they defied the normal.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't listed.
But we, we had to go through the process.
Yep.
Okay.
And it was, it wasn't because Kate, Kate's was a factory, if you recall. I mean, anybody would say that Kate's is a manufacturing operation. It is. It's a food processing operation.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
And that wasn't allowed in the R4 district. So, they came up with, you guys came up with something.
But that's not even, that's changing, that, that's changing the conditional uses in a zone. That, that's not something appeared which didn't fit.
Seasonal cottages, then.
Then seasonal cottages.
Seasonal cottages is, that, that's a good example.
Yeah, that's a better example.
All right, but that's one example in the last 10 years.
Well, the reason I mentioned Kate's butter is because it became an educational facility as part of the standard that they were supposed to meet.
Has it ever had?
I, I don't know. That's something the code's enforcement officer would check on. We went through and laid out what the circumstances are, and it is up to the code's enforcement officer to make sure that, that that's enforced. I don't know.
Okay. Do, do I have a motion on this change?
Yeah, so moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed?
Yeah, aye.
You, you oppose?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Motion carries four to one. All right, now we have the proposed amendments to the Rundle land use ordinance and the subdivision ordinance on application fees.
I, I think this is wonderful. We let the selectmen figure it out.
Well, I, I do.
Because they have control. They're the ones that should be doing this.
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion. We, we, we recommend the town adopt this amendment.
Nope, Marty got it.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Considering this horse beaten, all those in favor of recommending adoption of this at the town meeting signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, item number four, proposed amendments to the land use ordinance, repeal and replace section 5.9 landscaping and buffering. This is something I think will never be perfect, but I think this is an improvement. Here, take, take this one. I can grab two sometimes.
There's plenty of them.
I'll take one. I'm trying to remember what, what the change was. Trying to remember what the change was.
It's a whole, whole rewrite. Is it any better or worse?
You've spent months on it, Marty. It's got to be better.
Not necessarily, but, no.
Make a motion that we adopt it at the town meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion of this?
Yeah. My question is, existing places, does this fall under? Even they're in construction? In construction. We have not completed...
No, it doesn't. It only applies to applications under site land conditional use.
If they, if they obtained a permit either for permitted use or a conditional use, this is not applied.
So, they still fall under the old rules, even if they haven't followed the rules already?
Unfortunately.
Yes.
All right, you want to tell me about this?
Huh?
You want to tell me about this?
We're going to write down, lock that in there. We can point it out.
Okay.
Okay, my, my take is, it's, it's not perfect, but it's better.
Incrementalism at its best.
Okay.
Eventually, we'll get it right.
Take a vote.
All those in favor of recommending adoption of these changes at the town meeting signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, proposed amendments to the Rundle land use ordinance to add section 9.2.9 and 10.6.4, requiring applicants to demonstrate technical and financial capacity to complete a project under conditional use or site plan review. I'm going to make a comment out of the box here. I think that this is something that we really need, based on, based on a, a, a recent road subdivision where the fabric was laid down going the wrong direction, and the cover wasn't put in, and just a litany of problems.
And for that reason, I agree that they should be able to demonstrate technical skill. My, the thing I, I like the best about this is you, you can show that you can afford to do it. Because I can think of a couple of projects. It's just like, really? After two years, they still haven't done what they're supposed to do?
Yeah. I agree. Okay. Do we have a motion?
We make a motion. We follow recent laws, selectmen.
No, you tell me.
At town meeting.
Sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Talking about any future permit for any conditional use, private ways, anything.
They have to demonstrate the ability to do the job, the technical skills to do it, and the financial capacity to make sure that it's done.
On a, on a private drive.
If it requires a conditional use permit, yes, sir.
Not, not...
Not for any private drive, for a conditional use.
We've had this in the past, and some we've required, some we haven't. We're all over the place on this. Why would you care if somebody can't complete his private driveway?
Because who picks up the tab?
No, no.
If it doesn't get done.
You don't need a conditional use permit for a private driveway.
As soon as you change the standards back and forth, you do.
Right, right now, you do not need to have a conditional use permit for a private driveway.
This has nothing to do with private driveways.
I'm on a private road.
It does apply to a private road.
There you go.
If I want to build a private road out through the woods behind my house.
Why, why?
Why don't we talk about what a, what a private road is, what a private way is?
Okay.
Because we'll, we'll just keep flipping around unless we have the definition down.
Okay.
A private way is, is a, is a street that's, that's privately owned, but is designed and built to provide legal access under the zoning ordinance.
For two or more residences.
Two or more residences.
It's not a driveway.
It's not a driveway. It's a legal access.
Okay.
Not front porch, legal access.
Hold on. Here's my question, Roger. Give, give me an example where this board should grant a permit to someone who is, who does not have the technical skills and does not have, or, or does not have the financial wherewithal to finish the project? What?
We've had one, and I won't use the name, but it was on the Limerick Road, and it was a family deal. Lots deeded off, and we required this guy, private, Joe Blow homeowner, to post a bond. He's the only one we chose to, to do that to so far. Nothing has ever been done.
I, 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 okay. For the record, one thing that I think Rundle has struggled with, and I want to make, frankly, is equal application of the rules, consistent application of the rules. We may not always succeed, but that is a goal. And I, I personally cannot understand why, bottom line, Phil, if, if you want to build a private way, you, you have the technical, technical expertise, and if, if you can't show the financial capacity to do it, I know you can, so I, I'm not sure why it's a problem.
Now, question to the chair.
Yes.
If he has the equipment and the knowledge, he shouldn't have to turn out and show financial responsibility. Well, no, it, 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 if...
It's not just roads.
If, 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 let's say it's Pat Spang, okay?
Pat who?
Pat Spang.
Okay.
Okay. Pat Spang wants to build private way, he's got more Tonka toys that...
Yeah.
He, he could build anything.
Yeah.
So, financial resources, what financial, what does he need? He needs to be able to buy the gravel and the fabric and the culverts. And, like, heck, he didn't buy the gravel. Tim probably got it stashed, you know, behind the, the house on Granite Heights.
Yeah.
So, bottom line, in, 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 in that circumstance, the financial resources doesn't mean, in, in Phil's case, it doesn't mean Phil has to show he has the ability to pay someone else.
he has the ability to pay someone else to do the work. It merely means that he has to demonstrate that he either has the equipment or can rent the equipment and get it done. Does that make sense?
Whenever you guys ask, or whenever the town asks for a private way, for an applicant for private way or public way, we got to which planning board requires an engineered plan.
That would demonstrate technical ability.
So you don't need to change much of that. It's already there.
I, I guess there's technical specifications, and then there's the execution. And unless I'm mistaken, I think that's one of the issues this language is intended to address.
Well, the issue is always execution.
This ordinance addresses that issue, and it addresses it to two different, for lack of a better term, problem children that this planning board has had. One of whom does not have the technical capability of doing what he said he was going to do.
What his engineer said he was going to do.
What his engineer said he was going to, is not capable of doing it. And that's been clearly demonstrated. And the other one is the financial issue where they just refused to provide the information necessary and the financial resources to make sure that they did the job correctly. And that's the big problem that we have. We have problem children who cause everybody else to have to come into compliance with the ordinance.
And I will add, how fair is it for us to require one applicant to provide evidence and not somebody else? This is just saying, it's not a call. Everybody just has to demonstrate it. I think it's more of a fairness thing. Fairness to the town, rather than have some of the problem issues where they're lingering and hire lawyers to make them do what they agreed to do. This just says if my devils, you're going to follow through on the plan. We're already doing that for most projects anyway. It just makes it, so it's not a call, it just has to be done.
To the chair, question?
Yes, sir.
That's fine and dandy. Even if you have an engineering plan, okay? The fact is that we have seen it in the past. It comes back after it was done as built, not as required. How do we correct?
Well, you know, actually, I suddenly, I have a question.
Yeah.
How does, how would this board, okay, so I want to do something to one of the private ways that I own. There are four of them, or five. I think it's five, no, four. I want to make changes to, and I hire a good engineer. And I have the financial resources to, not to buy Tonka toys, but to rent them. And have no problem establishing that. How does this board determine that whether or not I have the technical expertise to do the job? How does, yeah, I, I know, well, I personally know that Phil knows how to build a road.
Yeah.
I know that Pat Spang knows how to build a road.
Correct.
And how to follow an engineer plan. But how does this board determine that the applicant or his contractor or whatever? I guess, here's what, I'm quite double advocate, but something has occurred to me. I want to make a change to
Whatever.
To whatever. And to Chip's Way, alright, we'll call it that. I want to make a change to Chip's Way, and I hire the best engineer I can possibly find. And I have a bajillion dollars to thank. Obviously, I don't, but, yeah, say I have that. But I'm going to want a permit from this board before I go out to bid with those engineering specifications for a contractor. So I'm, so I'm not, I'm not able to tell you my contractor is Phil, who I'm confident could do the job.
That's the best we could do, though.
Well, but, 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 no, my point, though, is that there's, in terms of the order of business, if you are either building or extending or doing something with a private way, and the problem child that was mentioned, how does this board? I'm not qualified to determine the expertise of a given contractor. And in normal, the normal order of business would be to get the permit first and then hire the contractor.
And to your point, I agree with you from that point of view. I've known Phil forty years. And I'm assuming that Phil knows what he's doing. I assume that Roger knows what he's doing, because that's their jobs. We also assume that the other guy knew what he was doing, not so much. I don't have a problem, well, because we can't make a change. But I, I wouldn't have a problem losing the technical aspect of it as long as we have the financial. Because if we have the financial, then it can be, the issue can be forced.
I, I I wish, I wish, I wish that we could amend this, because I would, I would.
Not tonight, we can't.
I know we can't, but I'm going to tell you.
I cannot vote, personally, I cannot vote in favor of this with the technical skill language in there, because we have, we do not have, we don't have the qualifications to make that determination. And the applicant probably, probably, not maybe, probably hasn't even selected a contractor yet for us to evaluate.
Mr. Chairman, may I answer that? May I answer your question and how you would do that? Having written about fifty or plus site location permits where this is the language that you have to fulfill on a site location permit for DEP to get a DEP permit? Because you have to prove technical capability to produce, to fulfill the project. And you have to say that, you have to show you have the financial capacity to complete the project. Which basically, you're dealing just with roads. Remember, we don't deal with just roads. We deal with a whole bunch of different things. It would be similar to, we had a person who wanted to start an integrated vocalization program here and start a project here, if you may recall, years ago. That's a situation where you say, well, we're not familiar with that. Can you give us some indication on how this process is done, what your experience is, and what, how you intend to build the project? So they lay out, basically, it's a one-page thing that you do.
But, but.
And in this case.
Ted, in that case, you're talking about a conditional use permit
Right.
for something unusual.
That's, I decided to go on the extreme, but for a road project? For a road project, which is fairly simple, we would say, the person would submit, I intend to, we intend to hire a professional road contractor. Having not selected at this point, and we will be doing it with.
And what if Peter Lowjoy is the bottom, is the low bidder?
That's not to use names. Well, Ted, that may be.
This doesn't work for me. This just doesn't work for me.
Fine.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend that the town adopt this amendment.
I will second that. And I will also say that if the town does, at the next meeting, I'm going to recommend that we put a petition on to repeal the first item on that, the technical expertise. But I want the financial side on there, so I will go along with your motion.
Why don't you not do it then? Why don't you not do it then? Because you already have financial. Financial capacity is usually for a larger project.
Let's bring it, let's bring it in June, please.
Fine.
We have a motion to second it. Any discussion? Yes, I have a discussion. Let's
Well, vote on it.
Let's work on this for June. Get this amorphous, undefinable technical skill part out and clarify the financial requirement.
Should we, and that logic, should we pull the financial capacity out? No, but if the tech, you're saying the technical can't be proven. Financial, maybe they have it this week, next week to bankrupt. You know, you could use any kind of logic.
But from the financial point of view, you can get letters of credit, you can get lines of credit. There's all kinds of stuff that they can provide to, that locks in their financial ability.
Right. So.
That motion.
Okay.
So what you're advocating is that we send this to the board of selectmen. But as soon as it's there, if the town approves it, we go back and make another change.
No, I think Chip is recommending we.
I, my personal desire is to set this aside and get it
Neither one of us were here, neither Chip or me.
Yeah, we got time to do that.
Yes.
This is, oh, this is for January.
There's no crisis to adopt this right now. If we want to make a change to it, we can change it and bring it to the June town meeting, not the one in January.
Then we vote down the amendment. We vote down the motion.
We recommend. We vote down not to recommend it.
Just ask to withdraw it.
Withdraw the motion.
Ask to withdraw this app, this amendment to the board of selectmen. Recommendation, withdraw it.
It's not the board of selectmen, it's the town meeting.
I'll withdraw my second.
No, it is the board of selectmen set the warrant.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Recommendation is to the board of selectmen to withdraw it from the warrant. Okay? That would be the thing. If that's what the board wants to do, that's what.
Roger's made a motion, so I have a second.
I made the motion. Rich did second it.
Yeah, but I withdrew my second. So what is Roger's motion?
You follow him? No, we, we'll send this to the board of selectmen for recommendation for the, that you put on a warrant.
Recommend they withdraw it.
We recommend they withdraw it from the warrant.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
What you're trying to fix was something that came as an approved subdivision by you guys. Not to pass it off on anybody, but it was an approved subdivision. And you've got a problem that could have been addressed, wasn't addressed, and now it's, it's out of hand. This wouldn't have fixed it.
It's not again.
This wouldn't even touched it.
That's precisely why I don't like this language.
All done.
But this doesn't just address that, it addresses other things.
Yeah, but you're trying to address everything, and that's the whole problem with this. A private drive that.
We're not dealing with a drive, it's not just private, yeah, it's, well, look.
As soon as you put it.
Okay.
Can we have a vote, first?
Yes, yeah. All those in favor of the motion Roger made to recommend the board of selectmen not include this in the town warrant, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any names?
There we go.
Motion carries unanimously.
Now, I would like to make another statement or question. Can we get together with the contractors, Roger, and everything else to expedite some of the questions and problems that we have with the idea of roads and private ways?
That's already been done. Chip has a note to contact Tom.
I will, I will open that again. I don't know why I haven't heard from you, Phil Danilke. I will find out.
I will ask another selectman to turn around, please, help us.
What was presented to me for the record was the idea of a joint meeting of the planning board and the board of selectmen and the Department of Public Works and the fire department. Quite frankly, by the time you get that many people in a room, I perceived it as being a challenge to stay focused and get something constructive done. What I approached Mr. Danilke about was establishing a subcommittee or something that was composed of representatives of three or four of those groups just to get an agenda pulled together before we get the herd of cats in our. Okay? Alright, can we move to item six? Ending applications, Ledwood Meadows subdivision. A request for a permit extension. This is a proposed development of two commercial lots and a four-life cluster subdivision, which we have visited at least once. Oh, we visited twice. A budding property. Mr. Lavie is the applicant. Mr. Gadboy, who is not present, is the owner's agent. And Roger, you're not there yet. I'm sorry. So let me open this, I'm, actually, Mr. Planner, can you explain to us exactly just for the record, when was this application submitted, when was it approved? What is the deadline it was approaching?
This application was approved, I believe, in January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. It was provisioned that you must substantially complete the project unless it's phased within two years. The applicant approached the planning board last year in March and said, hey, I've got an idea before I start working on this to actually move the road over out of, off of the current or the approved location of Ledge Cliff Drive and move it on to an adjacent property or next to, along an adjacent property so it can serve two properties and where you can take advantage of less, less difficult topography. So there'd be less blasting, less work, and it also can be used as a single entry point.
Pardon me, but the, so the, this predates my presence on the board.
Yes.
So the, the application which was approved was driving straight through the cliff?
No.
No, it was, it was.
On the other side.
Originally, originally it was. He was going to blast out the cliff.
Wait, wait, wait.
On an offside of the. On his property, on the ledge.
On his property?
Correct.
Okay, but not where we have walked and seen.
Well, no, we did walk the original site where he was going to be going through the cliff. He then came to us a couple of months later and said, I got this other possibility, and which is what we've been walking since then.
Correct.
You know, I was, my only concern on this whole thing was, I didn't realize it was January sixteen. I thought it was further back than that and that we had already granted an extension.
The more recent drawing we saw is back to the original plan.
Okay, then that's, then I don't, I don't have a problem.
You meant March of sixteen.
Yes. No, March of, no.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're about March of sixteen.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
And what had happened was that also, because the board remembers this was approved, this was entertained by the board. And what had happened was Mr. Lavie had let it, basically had not completed the application, the final application, which was the final subdivision process. And therefore, he had to resubmit, if you remember. He resubmitted fifteen, just in June fifteen, I think he resubmitted. And the planning board approved it on January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. So. So that was the first approval. Before, it wasn't officially approved because he didn't finish the condo docs and the rest of that.
Right.
So he guys approval, so there has been no, no extension that has been granted. He's asked for an extension now, and talked to the board about it. When we first started this, saying, this will take time. Can I, can we not, I don't want to start work now, I want to explore this other option. And he's running out of time now, and to, in order to preserve his subdivision, what he wants to do is ask for an extension.
Okay. The rest of the board comments, would it be acceptable if we gave Mr. Lavie a chance to address the board? I mean, is that okay? Phil, can you just tell us what? Phil, can you just tell us what, where you are and the rationale for the extension, please?
Ted explained it. We were approved to put a road in the one spot. The opportunity came about to move the road down so the proposed new location would service my neighbor and myself. Would service two properties on one road. And that would eliminate having two entrances onto one eleven within two hundred feet of each other, one hundred and fifty feet of each other. So we proposed that to the board. We gave it to the engineer to design it and apparently, the engineer that we chose hasn't found the time to get it done, to present it to the board. So he's been, I won't say sitting on his thumb, but, because he's really busy, but he hasn't completed our engineered plan to present to the board. We had no plan to present at this point.
Okay. But is the current, is the current plan to go through the ledge or to go partially or? Are we back to the, we did a site walk.
Right.
Where the road, the road was curving around.
Right.
Are we, are we back to that?
We want to do the road straight. And at one point.
I'm sorry, you want to go straight through?
Straight through, yes.
And the grade would be?
Yeah, well, we proposed an eight percent grade. The board denied that. So our engineer is presently designing road with a five percent grade.
Okay.
And he hasn't completed his process, so we cannot, I don't have anything to present to the board at this point. And if I don't get an extension, then I'm going to start my road tomorrow morning, and you will have two entrances onto Route one eleven within a hundred and fifty feet. So that's my reason for.
Maybe not, depending on DOT.
Well, depending on what my neighbor.
You've got a permit, he doesn't.
This is, this is the first extension. The ordinance allows for what, one extension or two?
Two.
Two extensions, each extension being for one year in length. So I would make a motion.
I already did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I hadn't heard.
I did.
I didn't, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I didn't either.
And I'm assuming somebody down there seconded it?
Seconded, yeah.
Then my, okay, I'll stop. We didn't hear it at this end.
My mouth is usually loud, though.
It's the second, it's the bottom, we didn't hear the second.
I got overtalked again, like normal.
Who overtalked you?
No, making overtalk.
Was that at the table?
You were Roger talking over there.
Don't shut up. Any further discussion?
Okay, we, yeah, any further discussion? All right, so we are voting to allow a one-year extension on the subdivision approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Don't say no, bro.
You just said yes.
Okay.
Let me ask the applicant a question. If I may.
Mr. Chairman, will I get a letter in writing?
Yes.
Granting that one year extension?
Yes.
Mr. Labby, have you heard anything from your neighbor?
My neighbor is all over the engineer with my blessing to get this thing moving. And we've made the comment to the engineer that if he doesn't get us on the agenda for the last meeting in December, we will be starting fresh with a new engineer.
You know, the closing date for that was today. The closing date for the last meeting in December.
We may end up with a new engineer. Which might take half the year. I like Paul, but he's just not getting it done for us.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Labby.
Thank you.
Any other business? Mr. Planner?
Yes.
What do you have for us in the other business category?
A number of things.
Okay.
First of all, I have a proposal to solve a problem that we have right now.